Cooper's getting his picture. All right, well.
I don't know whether to wait for Peter.
Yeah.
So this is middle school?
Well, it looks like.
Hi, kids.
They're so cute.
How's it going?
I like the plastic fish.
Do you want to do it?
I'm just waiting for Peter.
No, do you want to do it?
Yeah, let's do that. Should we, um, I don't know whether to wait in there or not.
I don't know.
Okay. I don't know whether to wait. Okay. I'm just waiting for Peter.
We're just gonna wait another minute. We're waiting for one more member, but if he doesn't come, we'll get rolling.
Oh, he had the door.
That's funny, right?
Yeah. I'm hoping.
It's gotta be him.
Yep. It's all right.
Left my briefcase at home.
Want a piece of paper or anything?
To look official.
Yeah.
I've read all the material.
You can write on your hands.
Peter, Shannon's on conference.
Okay. I will call the meeting to order and we will stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, our first order of business is approval of the minutes of January 16th. If everybody had a chance to read them. Any discussion?
Nope.
Motion to approve?
I move to approve the minutes of the 16th of January.
Paul in favor?
Aye.
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 Shannon!
Aye.
Thank you. Public comment. Do we have anybody here for public comment? Okay. So we're gonna move along to our reports of the school committee and Dr. Antonucci is going to start.
Yeah, I'm not sure if I can turn over. We have some special guests here tonight. I believe they're gonna introduce themselves, but Kathy, does anybody wanna just introduce this?
Yeah. So, hi, Kathy McCarthy.
You can come sit right here. You'll have your own microphone.
I will, thank you. Hi, Kathy McCarthy. I'm the science supervisor for grade six through 12 and through the new science standards and because of our science curriculum review that we did a couple of years ago, we're developing new curriculum. And in the middle school, we adopted a new curriculum this year. It's called the SEEPUP curriculum, which stands for Science Education for Public Understanding Program. And it's a highly regarded curriculum developed through University of California Berkeley and it works with our frameworks in an instructional program that integrates scientific inquiry with thematic approach for teaching science. So, we're looking at big, real-world questions and trying to infuse the content with these questions. And the students are really learning how to grapple with the questions that they're going to be having to answer. And they, you guys are gonna be solving a lot of problems for us in the future and we're very thankful that you're giving us a lot of great ideas and giving a lot of thought to the problems that we have to solve in science. And our six through eight curriculum is designed, looking at content, but looking at it through a bigger lens. So, a big question that, a big policy question or a big community question that the students are trying to find an answer for. It doesn't necessarily have one specific answer, but gives them an opportunity to understand the content, learn the content, and apply that to real-world problems. And I'd like to first introduce and thank the eighth grade teachers who were involved in this project. Suzanne Sullivan is our eighth grade science teacher. Ally Gale is a sped teacher for the eighth grade, eight B team. And Ally Graham, I'm sorry, Ally Graham. And Kayla Shannon is the math teacher. And this was really an integrated project, interdisciplinary project between special ed, math, and science. So, I will let you guys introduce the project.
Okay, literally thought all of the teachers were students.
So, mine, sorry, it should probably not be awkward about what I'm saying. My name's Suzanne Sullivan. I'm the middle school science teacher. And the students are about to present their amazing interpretations of this project and unit, but I just wanted to say that this new curriculum really lends itself to talk outside of the curriculum sometimes. And while we were discussing properties of matter and the usefulness of aluminum, plastic, and glass, we really tended to focus on plastic pollution towards the end of it. And they'll tell you some of the activities that we did, but I just wanna thank Kayla and Ally, myself. She's a math teacher and we always tried to figure out how we can work together. And Ally co-teaches with me and she did an amazing job helping bridge some of these ideas. And then these guys are really gonna take it away because they have a knack for doing some pretty excellent stuff that they'll share for you.
Hi. So, I'm Mills Dennison. I was one of the students who did this program with Ms. Sullivan, Ms. Graham, and Ms. Shannon. So, personally, I thought this program was excellent. It really viewed the, everything about plastics, how useful they are and the effects they have on our natural world, the environment, in every sense. So, it didn't just provide one view of things. We really did examine the issue from all angles. And it wasn't just in one way either. We watched documentaries and we did physical labs where we tested the properties of plastics to see if they were useful, how they were useful, and, you know, to try to understand further their negative impacts. So, that included watching the Netflix documentary, A Plastic Ocean. And as far, it also allowed the students to really take everything we learned and really ran with it. We have, for the artistic students, we had these interesting projects where we used plastics to really represent the dangers that they do present. And, you know, for the students who have a more traditional academic focus or forte, if you will, there was, we had the ability to, you know, write essays and do all of those. We, anybody who wanted to participate really could. And overall, it was a great learning experience. And I think anybody who entered the program came out not only learning, knowing much more than they had, but really having a deeper understanding of the issue at hand. So, I thought overall it was just a fantastic program.
Hi, I'm Ava Pang. Me and my two friends, we like perform, or we prepared a script to read off of, so. Do you guys wanna introduce yourselves?
Sure. I'm Bridget Fallon.
I'm Flynn Bridget.
And to start us off, I have my presentation that I did for class. My fact was forty percent of birds die of starvation, but their stomachs are full of plastic in the trash. So, I made a plastic bird and filled its stomach with plastic to resemble the stomachs of regular birds.
I made this for my project in class. It's a star because my fact is there are more pieces of microplastic in the ocean than there are stars in the Milky Way. And there are 200 billion stars in the Milky Way. In addition to those facts, plastic bags in the ocean look like jellyfish and sea turtles will eat them and when they eat them, they'll die.
Although plastic is convenient and easy to make, when produced releases chemicals and toxins every time you make a single plastic product.
Instead of using plastic disposable water bottles, it is much better to use reusable ones made of aluminum or glass. Even reusable plastic bottles are a better alternative to single-use ones.
So, the last fact I'm gonna say today is that plastic spoils our groundwater. The toxic chemicals leak out of the plastic and into the ground. It flows downstream into lakes and rivers. This affects the crops we eat.
We don't only consume plastic and its harmful toxins through the air and water, but we consume plastic when we eat animals. Fish eat plastic and we eat fish. Plastic affects our entire food chain.
The most important thing we learned was?
Plastic doesn't break down.
It breaks up.
And I don't know if any of you heard today, there was an article and it might be a day or two behind, but I don't know, I think it was Australia or somewhere, they are recycling avocado pits and they become completely biodegradable straws, silverware, well, not silverware, plasticware, forks, not, so that's the new wave of somebody trying to make a dent in the plastic monstrosity. That was excellent.
Thank you.
How does it, how has it affected your habits? Has there been any, has it prompted, has your research prompted you to change the way you live your life?
I now use more reusable water bottles made of glass and aluminum than I would with regular plastic bottles, the one-use ones.
For my reflection, we all had to make a reflection. It was either a video or we had to write about how much plastic we use each day and like what we use it for and what we think about that. I wrote about like going through a whole day with plastic after knowing about the effects it has on the environment and on us and animals. And I realized how much we use each day and I wrote about that in my reflection.
Right.
I think what I, the biggest impact I took away was, I was always thinking of plastic, you know, if it's single-use, it's bad. And if it's reusable, you know, that's not as much of an impact. But the truth is that recycling of plastic is much, much more complicated than I feel like anyone really realizes without going into the research. So, not only am I trying, since I really feel not only should I be cutting down on reusable plastics, but really even reusable plastics are not acceptable for use, in my opinion, because they, everything falls into those same categories of, you know, just it's never going away and it presents an issue.
And for me, my lunch, when I bring my avocado to school, instead of, instead of eating it with plastic utensils, I bring reusable silverware.
Excellent.
And now she should save the pet.
So, have you thought of any ideas that we should do as a school system to reduce our use of plastics?
I think we should really focus on how much recycling we're doing. There's multiple times where I'll go to throw my food out at lunch and just see plastic water bottles, plastic in the trash. And I think that as a school, we could try to recycle more.
Yeah, yeah. Great. Good idea. Thank you.
I agree with you.
I had a question about surprises from plastic. Like, what were some examples that you had where you discovered something was plastic where you didn't really realize it was before? Like, plastic bottles, very obvious. But what are some of the examples that you've discovered plastic is not so obvious?
Well, we learned about like the different things that we wouldn't expect it to. And one of the things I was really surprised by is that it's in like a lot of our food because the toxins from the containers and what the food is stored in before we buy it, it gets into the food that we eat and it also does, how Bridget was saying, how it goes through the food chain. And if fish or other animals eat plastic, then we eventually eat the plastic that they consumed.
And I think most of the time when people think of plastic, they think of stuff like straws and water bottles, but really, plastic is also in building materials. So, even this school building is built with a lot of plastic. So, I think that, for me, that was the biggest, you know, that I never was really thinking of plastic as being so omnipresent as I really do know now it is.
I thought the most surprising thing for me was that plastic is actually in us rather than somewhere else. And it's very harmful. It affects our bloodstream and just does no good. So, that was the most, I was blown away by that.
The most surprising thing that I heard was that plastic is actually in our clothes that we wear.
Right, that's, yeah, that's a great example.
But then, yeah, but then when we get rid of our clothes, we don't think that it's going to affect the environment in a negative way.
Yeah, I had, I have a nephew who's like a PhD materials science person and he works for an organization that looks at household chemicals and how they get into the environment. But one of the things they've focused on, all waterproof materials used is a product that's basically less than a hundred years old. It's related to Teflon. So, anything that's waterproof, all the upholstery, all the rugs and stuff, and within seventy-five years, it's found in the bloodstream of every mammal on the planet. So, if you're a polar bear in the Arctic. But I would say just that was, I was thinking clothes because virtually every one of us is wearing plastic, whether it's Lululemon or Spandex or elastic waistbands or plastic buttons on your shirts or acrylic or nylon or polyester or what have you. So, it's, it's one of those things. It's easy to look at the obvious, but also be mindful and also dig deeper, find all the places it's surrounding all of us, you know, both in our food and around our bodies and in our homes and in our buildings. But clothes was one that I was wondering if one of you would recognize that clothes is, clothes are largely plastic.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks for coming, yeah.
They should hang out at the dump, too. I mean, we're all single-stream and, well, not anymore, but China won't take our garbage anymore, so, or our recycling. Okay, Danielle.
Okay, I just wanted to give you all a brief update of our half-day professional development day last Friday. So, we had a number of projects being worked on by teachers across the district. I'll just give you a general overview. There were many other smaller groups of teachers working, but the Chandler teachers had a social-emotional learning presentation that was given by Deb Kirby and Amy Burns. So, that was wonderful job that our own staff did. Alden teachers had an overview of a new curriculum resource that we are piloting this spring called Newzella. Newzella is something that we have across the whole district that offers primary source articles that are leveled and so you can get topics, science, social studies, math, social-emotional learning, and we're looking at that as a resource across the district. That was great. And the DMS and the DHS teachers worked on curriculum alignment in their own departments on Friday. And we also had a presentation on the 504 process. So, that's something that we will continue to work on. We also had a meeting on Monday with our School Wellness Advisory Council, so I told you all that I'd report on that committee. We discussed the Calm Classroom Program and how it's used across the district. And I think we're mainly using it at Chandler School, but we are using it in different ways in the other schools as well. We talked about possibly expanding the Stress Less Week that they have at the high school to include the Alden-Chandler and Middle School. And that's something that we may be able to do next year because I don't think we have another meeting of our Wellness Advisory Council before the Stress Less Week comes up in March. We also took a look at the 2017 Youth Risk Behavior Survey, so that's another resource that we have, that we can look at and see some of our trends in our youth risk behavior. And we also have another survey coming up this year, so we'll be working on developing questions for that. So, the next meeting of the Wellness Advisory Council is April 8th at 3:30, if any of you are able to come. And that is it for me.
When will the Youth Risk Behavior Survey be administered?
I believe in the spring, yep.
So, you said April 8th?
April 8th.
What time?
3:30 here at Alden 104.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. You're up. Katie, please?
So, I just wanted to update you all on the status of the fiscal year 18 end-of-the-year report. So, we submitted the report at the end of September to the state. We had the auditors in the office last Monday and Tuesday. And so, I am just in the process of finishing a few last questions that they had and that will finish up the audit process. And I expect that we'll have that complete well ahead of the April deadline. So, April is the deadline that's been established by the state to have that finished. The governor's preliminary fiscal year 20 budget data has become available. And this also includes the Department of Education preliminary Chapter 78 and information around the net school spending requirements. So, this is an estimate and it is subject to change. But right now, the district is preliminarily slated to receive $5,317,677. And this is an increase of $64,802 over fiscal year 19. The governor has also proposed the circuit breaker, circuit breaker funding for fiscal year 20. And right now, the funding has been set at 70% for the circuit breaker reimbursement. So, just to put that kind of into context, historically, for fiscal year 17, the reimbursement rate was finalized at 73%. For 18, it was 72%. And for 19, it's 72%. So, it's a little bit below what the historical average has been, but it's, again, it's preliminary, so it's subject to change. That's all I got.
Great. Thank you.
Just a question on the audit. Is that, is, how often have we been audited? And is that, it's not an every-year event?
It is every year.
Oh, it is? Okay. The end-of-year report specifically.
End-of-the-year reports specifically, yeah.
And who audits?
We have Powers and Sullivan, so we have an outside audit firm that comes in and takes a look at their reports for us.
It's a requirement from the state.
Right.
But we have to pay a private audit, yeah.
Got it.
It's another unfunded mandate.
It's part of the game, yeah.
It's been around probably for, I don't know, 15 years, that requirement, so.
I don't think I knew that.
So, just off the top of my head, the increase in Chapter 70 funding is less than 1% increase.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So, the minimum increase per pupil was set at $20.
Right.
Per pupil this year. So, I think last year it was $30.
Right.
So, it was a larger increase.
Yeah.
And Dexbury receives the, kind of the funding floor.
Yes, 'cause we fund over the limit, yeah.
In recent years, I mean, there's definitely been a trend where the governor comes in low.
Right.
And the legislature kind of bumps up a little bit. I mean, I don't know why. But that's, so I'm not sure if that's gonna happen this year. And we'll continue to kind of lobby and talk to our legislators about that, but it's kind of been the trend.
Right.
I think that has to do with the legislators, they represent 351 municipalities, right? And so, they're, they're a little more boots on the ground as it relates to funding and they wanna make sure that they take care of their constituents. So, they tend to beef that up a little bit. So, we're fine, but we'd like a little more.
Of course.
Nonetheless.
Yeah, great, thank you. That's a perfect segue to my comment. Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
So, I was just gonna remind everybody, as Dr. Antonucci mentioned, I think it was before Christmas, there's going to be on February 28th at 7:00 PM in this room, a panel discussion of the foundation budget and Chapter 70 funding. And Representative Josh Cutler will be in attendance, Representative Kathy Lanatra, Senator Patrick O'Connor, our own Dr. Antonucci. And we'll go through the kind of fundamentals of Chapter 70 funding, how towns' allocations are calculated. And then Senator O'Connor is gonna talk about the current reforms that are being proposed. And Representative Lanatra is gonna talk about ways in which, as a community, we can get involved. I'll be moderating the panel, so I'd love it if everybody attended with their questions and their inquiring minds. So, again, that's February 28th at 7:00 PM here in Alden 104.
I think you said Kate Sheehan will be here, too, right?
Yes. She's a middle school teacher. She and Martha Dennison are organizing it.
Awesome. Excellent. All right, Jess, take it away.
Hello. So, this week in the high school, we have the distractology program for high schoolers with learner's permit or driver's learner's permit or a driver's license. And it's a 40-minute course or program during midday and it simulates what it would be like to be in an accident if you were distracted by texting or playing loud music. And I actually did the course on Monday and I found it like extremely eye-opening and I thought it was like very beneficial just 'cause the amount of people you see so distracted each day, like even coming out of the school parking lot. So, I thought it was very beneficial. And you got a $15 gas gift card for doing it, so.
How do students sign up for that?
It was on a signup genius, I think, sent out by Mr. Scuzzaro.
And you go during iLab or gym or any time?
Yeah, so they, yeah, I think it's during whatever time was available.
You're excused.
But you're excused, but it was, it was an awesome program.
Did you crash?
I did, unfortunately. They set you up, I think, though. They tell you to look at your phone and I, no. And then the high school and middle school Impact Program are taking part in the Read Across America Program. And that's from March 4th to the 29th, so students are encouraged to bring in gently-used books into their iLab. And then the iLab with the most amount of books will receive a cake. And the DHS sports teams are rolling into their championship games. And the girls' swimming team already started off by winning the 20th consecutive league title. And the boys' swim team won their seventh consecutive league title. And I think the hockey team also won tonight for their league title.
Wow.
And then the DHS also hosted their first Model United Nations Conference this past Saturday. And I heard it was a huge success. They had different committees such as like the Crisis Committee and the Harry Potter Committee, so it was a fun way to get like an educational view and also kind of bring some fun aspects to that. And then the DHS Club Ducks Buds is gonna be hosting a bowling night tomorrow night at Alley Cat Lane for students in the collaborative program to go and bowl with their buds and just have some fun. And then course selection is coming up very fast. And that is gonna be, there's gonna be an informational meeting on Wednesday, February 27th at 6 o'clock. And Alden will be having registration for their science fair starting February 25th. And Chandler will be having their first grade family learning night tomorrow night, February 7th, from 6 to 7. And that's it.
Thank you. That's a lot.
One, just clarif, not clarification, just Ducks Buds, if you don't know, is just like the rebranded Best Buddies, I think. Do we talk about them? I can't remember.
I thought we did, let me know.
We just, just, it's a new name.
Yeah, I'm the president of it.
Oh, yeah. So, we sort of, I don't know if I'm the right word, de-affiliated, I don't know if I might have made that word up, but from the, from the national program, but it still is robust. It's an incredible program.
Yeah, it's the same exact program, just instead of paying the $500 or so to be a part, to have the name, Best Buddies.
Yeah.
We decided we could use that money to fund a bus, go on a field trip, and just change the name. So, same exact program, same goal, just different name.
Smart.
Yeah, great job, yeah.
Yeah, that's great. Okay. So, my report, I just, this week I wanted to give a shout-out to the Clipper. I looked at the Clipper today and the school coverage was excellent. I mean, it had, we always cover the sports, of course, but there was ballroom dancing, hundredth day of school, kids dressed in their Super Bowl shirts, Beauty and the Beast. And-
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, you're up. Katie Plake?
Sure. So I just wanted to update you all on the status of the fiscal year eighteen end of the year report. So we submitted the report at the end of September to the state. We had, we had the auditors in the office last Monday and Tuesday. And so I am just in the process of finishing a few last questions that they had. And that will finish up the audit process. And I expect that we'll have that complete well ahead of the April deadline. So April is the deadline that's been established by the state to have that finished. And the governor's preliminary fiscal year twenty budget data has become available. And this also includes the Department of Education preliminary Chapter Seventy-eight and information around the net school spending requirements. So this is an estimate and it is subject to change. But right now, the district is preliminarily slated to receive five million, three hundred and seventeen thousand, six hundred and seventy-seven dollars. And this is an increase of sixty-four thousand, eight hundred and two dollars over fiscal year nineteen. The governor has also proposed the circuit breaker, circuit breaker funding for fiscal year twenty. And right now, the funding has been set at seventy percent for the circuit breaker reimbursement. So just to put that kind of into context, historically, for fiscal year seventeen, the reimbursement rate was finalized at seventy-three percent. For eighteen, it was seventy-two percent, and for nineteen, it's seventy-two percent. So it's a little bit below what the historical average has been, but it's, again, it's preliminary, so it's subject to change. That's all I got.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a question on the audit. Is that, is, how often have we been audited? And is that, it's not an every-year event?
It is every year. Yes, yes.
The end-of-year reports specifically.
End-of-the-year reports specifically, yeah.
And who audits?
Um, we have Powers and Sullivan, so we have an outside audit firm that comes in and takes a look at their reports for us.
It's a requirement from the state.
Right, but you have to...
Private audit, yeah.
Got it.
It's another unfunded mandate.
It's part of the game, yeah.
It's been around probably for, I don't know, fifteen years, that requirement, so.
I don't think I knew that.
So, just off the top of my head, the increase in Chapter Seventy funding is less than one percent increase.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. So the minimum increase per pupil was set at twenty dollars.
Right.
Per pupil this year. So I think last year it was thirty dollars.
Right.
So it was a larger increase.
Yeah.
And Duxbury receives the, kind of the, the funding floor.
Yes, because we fund over the limit, yeah.
In recent years, I mean, there's definitely been a trend where the governor comes in low.
Right.
And the legislature kind of bumps up a little bit. I mean, I don't know why.
Yeah.
But that's, so I'm not sure if that's going to happen this year. And we'll continue to kind of lobby and talk to our legislators about that, but that's kind of been the trend.
Right.
I think that has to do with the legislators. They represent three hundred and fifty-one municipalities, right? And so they're, they're a little more boots on the ground as it relates to funding. And they want to make sure that they take care of their constituents. So they tend to beef that up a little bit, so. We're fine, but we'd like a little more.
Of course.
Nonetheless.
Yeah, great, thank you.
Thanks.
That's a perfect segue to my comment.
Do, yeah, that's what I was thinking.
So, so I was just gonna remind everybody, as Dr. Antonucci mentioned, I think it was before Christmas, that there's going to be on February twenty-eighth at seven PM in this room, panel discussion of the foundation budget and Chapter Seventy funding. And Representative Josh Cutler will be in attendance, Representative Kathy Lanatra, Senator Patrick O'Connor, our own Dr. Antonucci. And we'll go through the, the kind of fundamentals of Chapter Seventy funding, how towns' allocations are calculated. And then Senator O'Connor is going to talk about the current reforms that are being proposed. And Representative Lanatra is going to talk about ways in which, as a community, we can get involved. I'll be moderating the panel, so I'd love it if everybody attended with their questions and their inquiring minds. So again, that's February twenty-eighth at seven PM here in Alden 104.
I don't think you said Kate Sheehan will be here too, right?
Yes, she's, she and Martha Benson are organizing it.
Awesome.
As I understand.
Excellent. All right, Jess, take it away.
Hello, so this week in the high school, we have the distractology program for high schoolers with a learner's permit or driver's learner's permit or a driver's license. And it's a forty-minute course or program during midday. And it simulates what it would be like to be in an accident if you were distracted by texting or playing loud music. And I actually did the course on Monday, and I found it extremely eye-opening. And I thought it was, like, very beneficial, just because the amount of people you see so distracted each day, like, even coming out of the school parking lot. So I thought it was very beneficial. And you got a fifteen-dollar gas gift card for doing it, so.
How do students sign up for that?
It was on a signup genius, I think, sent out by Mr. Scuzzaro.
And you go during iLab or gym or any time?
Yeah, so they, yeah, I think it's during whatever time was available. But, your excuse, but it was, it was an awesome program.
Did you crash?
I, I did, unfortunately. They set you up, I think, though. They tell you to look at your phone, and I, no. And then the high school and middle school and PAC program are taking part in the Read Across America program. And that's from March fourth to the twenty-ninth. So students are encouraged to bring in gently-used books into their iLab. And then the iLab with the most amount of books will receive a cake. And the DHS sports teams are rolling into their championship games. And the girls' swimming team already started off by winning the twentieth consecutive league title. And the boys' swim team won their seventh consecutive league title. And I think the hockey team also won tonight for their league title. And then the DHS also hosted their first Model United Nations Conference this past Saturday. And I heard it was a huge success. They had different committees, such as like the Crisis Committee and the Harry Potter Committee. So it was a fun way to get, like, an educational view and also kind of bring some fun aspects to that. And then the DHS Club Ducks Buds is going to be hosting a bowling night tomorrow night at Alley Cat Lane for students in the collaborative program to go and bowl with their buds and just have some fun. And then course selection is coming up very fast. And that is going to be, there's going to be an informational meeting on Wednesday, February twenty-seventh at six o'clock. And Alden will be having registration for their science fair starting February twenty-fifth. And Chandler will be having their first grade family learning night tomorrow night, February seventh, from six to seven. And that's it.
Thank you. That's a lot.
One, just clarif, not clarification, just Ducks Buds, if you don't know, is just like the rebranded Best Buddies, I think. Do we talk about them? I can't remember.
I thought we did, let me know.
We just, 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 it's a new name.
Yeah, I'm the president of it.
Oh, yeah.
Tell me about it.
So we sort of, I don't know if I'm the right word, de-affiliated, I don't know if, I might have made that word up, but from the, from the national program. But it still is robust. It's, it's an incredible program.
Yeah, it's the same exact program, just instead of paying the five hundred dollars or so to be a part, to have the name, Best Buddies, we decided we could use that money to fund a bus, go on a field trip, and just change the name. So same exact program, same goal, just different name.
Smart.
Yeah, great job, yeah.
Yeah, that's great. Okay, so my report, I just, this week I wanted to give a shout-out to the Clipper. I looked at the Clipper today, and the school coverage was excellent. I mean, it had, we always cover the sports, of course, but there was ballroom dancing, Hundredth Day of School, kids dressed in their Super Bowl shirts, Beauty and the Beast. And then one article that jumped out at me, there's a, a middle school boy, I think he's an eighth grader, Will Anis, and he is the, he won the gold medal, so he's the junior United States Figure Skating Champion, and he's going to go to Germany. And I remember when he was learning to skate, my youngest was trying to learn to skate, we never progressed much further than... And he was whipping around the ice his first year of skating, and it's just been an amazing progression. Yeah, so that, there was a nice shout-out. It was in the Globe today, too, and then I was happy to see it in the Clipper.
He rated a triple axel.
That's right.
Yeah, that's crazy.
Competition, which is incredible.
I guess he's the youngest ever to do it, or youngest at that age to attempt. Yeah, yeah, it's pretty, I think he just put on skates and that was his thing. Yeah. Nine Duxbury High School teachers were nominated for Massachusetts Teacher of the Year, which means a student felt strongly about his or her teacher and put them in.
Actually, it took eleven.
You're kidding?
No.
I have nine names that I was going to read, but you, you can shout out the, I have Christine Robertson, and I know she teaches ASL. John Mayo, I don't know what he teaches.
Social Studies.
Okay, Kathleen Mastorgioomo.
Math.
Math. Megan Peterson.
English.
Devon Heath is science. Andrea Sterling.
Billy, it's really science.
Okay, Ryan Hall, math. Karen Irving. Science. Chris Aukerman. History, and?
And Liz Field.
All right, yeah.
And that's it.
Okay, awesome. So I thought, I mean, that's the biggest amount I've seen publicized, so that's great. Just a reminder to everyone, February eleventh, which is Monday night, at the seven PM Selectmen's Meeting, they will be discussing the marijuana-growing bylaws. There was an article in the Clipper today about maybe having a zone area away from where students congregate, et cetera, et cetera. So they, I don't know if they're going to take action that night, but everyone's welcome to that meeting. And then I always have my fun facts, because I read everything in sight. So the Globe on the thirty-first had an article, and they were talking about in Vermont, how Green Mountain College closed. And they sort of used that as a demographic study. Vermont has twenty-one colleges and universities, public and private. And just how that obviously doesn't just impact the students that can no longer go there, but all the staff and the surrounding towns, and how it's, it's just not good for the economy. And the, the demographics from Vermont are astounding. Only about fifty-eight percent of high school students go on to a four-year college. And in their rural, really poorer districts, it's like thirty-six percent. So I was checking with our guidance department by comparison. Duxbury has ninety percent of our high school graduates go on to a four-year college, and then another two percent do a two-year degree. So the statistics are quite different. And then the Wall Street Journal had an article about, and I didn't write it down, the debt, the amount of debt that grandparents are incurring, people sixty and over, to help send their students to private colleges. And it was like thirty-eight million dollars is owed by people sixty and over, just because the cost of colleges is going up and up. So those are my fun facts for the day, kids. All right, discussion items. First, we're going to do math curriculum update with Brandon Jocelyn and Dr. Klingeman.
Hi, Brandon.
Hey. Hello, everybody.
Hi.
Is that on? Yeah, bring it as close to you as you can.
So I'm here to talk about the sequencing proposal that we have for grade six through twelve. And then I'll try and give you some of the reasons behind some of the changes that we're implementing and everything. You know, I'll go through the, the middle school first and then the high school. They kind of marry with each other a little bit, so then any questions, I figure, you know, you have, they pop up, feel free to ask them, otherwise we'll do them at the end, if that's okay. So this, so the first slide of each is the current setup. And honestly, the current setup is going to match pretty similar to what we're proposing. It's, it's ovals instead of rectangles, you know, for a lot of it. But obviously, the, the big four issues that we see with the current structure, and earlier this year, I think I came here and talked about MCAS and stuff, and that kind of feeds into some of the stuff as well. But certainly, if, if you read the Clipper, the class size is certainly a big problem, and not just in math, but certainly the fact that math is leveled with the honors and the non-honors groups can kind of create class sizes which go up to thirty-one kids. I think I have three classes of thirty-one kids. And then even the smaller classes, you know, are still pretty sizable, so. The geometry, which is right below it, that's kind of one of the other issues. And that was kind of more tied to what we spoke about when we did the MCAS stuff. So if we dissolve the geometry semester course, because it doesn't seem to be working in terms of, you know, making sure that kids are mastering the geometry concepts, that one-point-o teacher could be dissolved and, well, not dissolved, but split up between seventh and eighth grade courses, and hopefully better some of the class sizes, so that was one of the moves there. And then also, with that person, we could take a couple semesterized courses. So one of them, and the name's going to change, actually, if you want to go to the next slide, we can... Oh, it's Math X still? So that name's probably going to change in about ten minutes, because we've changed it like a hundred times already. But in the middle, you can see the elective courses, so we came up with Math X. Since then, we floated out the name, um...
Operation.
Op, yes, thank you. I was thinking it was Operation X, but I'm like, no, I, I thought it sounded better, but. Operation Exploration. And we've kind of kept, we've, we've thrown this out there to the, to that teacher that teaches geometry. We've kind of kept him in the loop, and he had some other ideas. So Operation Exploration or Math X, it's going to be some sort of project-based course for kids. That's not a required course like the geometry course was. It would be a course that kids would want to take, you know, maybe outside of their art course or something like that. But we think it would free up, it would free up the kids' schedules with electives that they could take in seventh grade, but also be a fun, hands-on, project-based type of course, where they would still do some of the same things that they do currently in geometry. Some of that stuff would carry over. But it would also open up certain units that they're not exposed to, such as personal finance and some other important things like computer programming. We, you know, we don't have a computer programming separate course for middle school kids. But this could at least introduce some of it, maybe do a unit on it, and, you know, be able to kind of at least open up to that them, up, open up that for them for when they get to high school. And we do offer a couple of computer science courses. So that was the two, the two ideas on the left. In terms of the stuff on the right, the supports kind of would be the second semester. So the first semester, we would offer that Math X or Operation Exploration course. The second semester, that teacher, whoever teaches the first one, would teach a targeted support class for the kids that really need supports, which right now, they don't, they don't really have anything. So that would open up a semesterized course. Kind of did it on purpose the second semester, just so that it carry, you know, it's, it's timed right with the MCAS and everything like that. Not that the MCAS should be dictating everything, but certainly if we had the choice of doing it first or second semester, we would do it second semester, so that the information's retained for this testing. And that would just be taught to, you know, a smaller group of students, you know, maybe a dozen kids in a section. We'll see how many sections we run, but we look at the MCAS scores for grade five. That way, we would have them and, and we would have it ready for course selection night for when they go into seventh grade and be able to take a course like that and really try and get kids to, to buy in and get the parents to buy into that program, because, you know, quite frankly, all the kids would need it. Could backfill a lot of the areas that they're struggling and still keep them at grade level. And then Algebra One A is the only other thing on there, so that's not a huge change. The prior structure had it as Algebra One A. The current proposal is going to recall, rename that course, Integrated Algebra One. It's going to go a little bit further in the curriculum than the current Algebra One A. And that problem kind of is more of a high school problem than it is a, a middle school problem. But what it essentially does is if the Algebra One A kids would feed into an Algebra One Part B course in high school, and then those kids would be a year behind their peers. If we call it an Integrated Algebra One and get a little bit more of the Algebra One B content in that class, then those kids, as they move into the high school, could take a more integrated approach to geometry. Maybe it's just a term of Algebra One B, whether they get to in their Integrated Algebra course from eighth grade. And then really get into the geometry course and then at least have the same pathways as their peers. Sometimes it's just a maturation process where, you know, kid's just not ready. But if we can kind of keep them in a level playing field when they get to high school, it certainly opens up the courses that could, they could take and not be a year behind, which we think could solve a lot of their problems.
Can you talk a little bit about the work that you've already done with where the geometry is going?
Yeah, no, geometry's just gone. Kids are never going to learn geometry.
You still are going to teach geometry.
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, so the geometry course, you know, taught seventh and eighth grade standards. I think we spoke about that with the MCAS meeting. And that's part of the reason why the eighth grade MCAS scores were so low is because they would be taught their geometry standards during their seventh grade year. And for, you know, half the grade, it was the first semester of seventh grade year. So their ability to retain that without ever seeing it again, you know, it's no wonder why they didn't score so well. And then even the kids that had it in seventh grade that took the geometry course first semester didn't do well on the MCAS, because that was kind of done in the spring. So we did reassignment days with all the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade teachers to teach, to basically carve out some time right around MCAS time, a little bit before, to teach those standards, just the seventh grade standards in seventh grade, and then just the eighth grade standards in eighth grade. So, I mean, currently, the kids have had geometry, and they will for the rest of this year, so it's more of a spiral for those kids. But at least for the eighth graders, they're going to, you know, have a reminder of some of those standards that they learned the year before. And then moving forward, if we got rid of geometry, we would probably try and add another week of geometry just for those standards that are covered within the context of a regular, general grade seven math course and a regular, general grade eight math course. So that kind of creates a more integrated approach anyways, but the geometry semesterized course is something that's incredibly unique. There's almost no other school in Massachusetts that does it, so. Their regular, general education math courses are teaching geometry in there, and that's what we're going to do. All right, the high school. The high school, this is the current setup. And it looks like it's three pathways, but I think in reality, it's kind of two. That top-right corner is the Algebra One B, which is the only option for the kids in Algebra One A. Even if a kid gets a hundred percent in Algebra One A, they can't bypass Algebra One B, because they haven't, you know, there would be a big gap in their knowledge. So those kids would go into Algebra One B. So it's three levels, but the, the two, geometry and Algebra One B are both college level, and then the one on the left is the honors track. And then if you looked at below Algebra One B, it's also geometry. That's the exact same geometry course as the middle level for incoming freshmen. So those, that's a heterogeneous grouping of kids with sophomores and freshmen. And then the same thing with the Algebra Two, which is right below it, right? That's the same Algebra Two course as the, you know, middle column, second one down. So one of the big issues that, you know, it's not just me, I think, when you talk with the administration and the teachers, is a problem of equity, and that came up in our School Works curriculum review, which where math is in the review year this year. So it was more of a problem with equity. If a kid starts in Algebra One B, they would have to double up on math, which is really not feasible for a lot of these kids' schedules, to get caught up with the kids that are at the same grade level as they are. So that was a big equity problem. But also, if a kid took Algebra One B, they could never take a calculus course. And not that every kid is, you know, takes calculus anyways, but they don't even have the opportunity unless they did double up on math. At least this way, if we started them, if you went to the next slide, then we talk back and forth. But at least if we can get them into a geometry course, starting their freshman year, that pathway to take calculus is open. And not only that, but also take pre-calculus, because a lot of those kids would take Algebra One B their first year, Algebra Two their sophomore year, and then like in advanced, I'm sorry, Algebra One B their freshman year, geometry their sophomore year, Algebra Two their junior year, and then would go into the semester electives. So not only would they not get to calculus, the vast majority don't even get to pre-calculus. You know, and, and a lot, that's just kind of the data, there's not a lot of seniors that are in the advanced algebra trig. Danielle, could I just ask you to go back to that one?
Sure.
So those were, that's kind of the equity issue. The placements, which is another issue with this, and this is, I'll do my best to keep it within fifteen to twenty minutes overall. But the placements is really a hard one, and that's the one that the teachers really, you know, that comes up over and over again. In terms of overrides, we looked at the override data. I think math had the most overrides with thirty-eight, the next closest was, I think, fifteen. So there's definitely a lot of overrides, because, you know, with essentially the two levels, even though it looks like three levels, you're getting a lot of push from parents and kids alike to, to be in the honors level. And, you know, that's going to exist whether you do three levels or two levels. But I think what happens is, you know, with the kids that were lower in all of these courses, with the amount of overrides that they have, there's a lot of these kids, and now it's not, they're not the majority, I don't think, but there's certainly a lot more stress on the teacher to really go slower, so that, you know, they're not, they're adhering to those bottom, you know, five or six or seven kids. Whereas before, there might have been none or one. You know, so, I mean, obviously, teachers are going to differentiate regardless. But in terms of, we feel like the curriculum has definitely been watered down, not only for the honors, but also for the college level. And teachers are torn with these decisions of, well, there's such a diverse group in here. Are we going to teach to the top students, or are we going to teach to the bottom students? And that's a tough decision for teachers to make. And again, it's not just for honors, because a lot of times with the two levels now that we have, you have some really strong, maybe nearly honors kids in the college level, and then the kids that, you know, really are struggling and need supports in that same class. So teachers are torn, you know, do we, what are we going to do to keep these higher kids motivated? Or what are we going to do to keep these lower kids from really falling too far behind and, you know, having to backfill some certain areas where there's no supports? So we feel like those conversations are really hard, especially given the amount of overrides that we do have. And then that goes hand in hand with the rigor piece. Teachers, you know, inside kind of call it college prep and college prep plus, that the honors course doesn't really exist with the current structure, just because, you know, there's such a watering down of the curriculum with the vast group of students that we have, so. Those were kind of the main areas. The supports is another one, which we're trying to work with in the new proposal. We used to have a foundations and algebra type of course for kids, just to kind of backfill some of those areas. We don't have anything like that right now. We had flirted with the idea of going into some learning centers and trying to get to a lot of those kids, but a lot of those kids may not be in learning centers, or they might have certain non-math goals where we really can't get in there and teach math-specific things. So we're looking at a proposal. The proposal has that yellow little block under Algebra Two. That would be a targeted support type of course, which we would roll out in the context of an options course. So just like with the middle school kids for that skills course for seventh grade, we would flag kids based off their eighth grade MCAS scores. Identify maybe a section or two sections, depending on the scores, of kids that we could flag for options, and they would all take it, again, second semester of their sophomore year, just to be in conjunction with MCAS, excuse me. And that could essentially be the same thing as a skills type of course. We have right now, one of our math teachers is a point-two in options, so we would keep that. We wouldn't have to move anybody over or lose a section of anything else. So that would just be more of a, you know, foundational type of course, but in the context of options. And we would be pretty transparent with the kids, and guidance has said that it's more than, it's perfectly feasible to flag those kids and get them all on the same course. So it's not an options course with, you know, some sophomores mixed with some juniors and seniors. It would just be a group of sophomores that are struggling in math that need extra support, especially going into MCAS. I think that pretty much hits all of them. The pathways get opened up because of the removal of Algebra One B, and now it's more equitable. That kind of goes hand in hand with all those things that I was mentioning. The other thing that's at the bottom for the issues is... The other thing that's at the bottom for the issues is AAT. That stands for Advanced Algebra Trigonometry. Currently, we call the course AAT, but if you think about that name, Advanced Algebra Trigonometry, that is pre-calculus. I mean, I've been teaching pre-calculus for five years. It's getting what you didn't get to in Algebra Two, that's still technically an Algebra Two, you know, content area, and then the second half of the year is pretty much trigonometry. So we feel like we're doing kids a disservice by calling it AAT because, you know, it doesn't look as good on a transcript for a lot of these kids, and it's essentially a pre-calculus course. So that name change is a very simple one. We would just call that that third level of pre-calculus, pre-calculus instead of AAT. So the questions that I, that I think would probably come up is, you know, maybe the color coding. The color coding is the level of course. So the blue courses are honors, the red courses are AP weight, and then the green courses will be college prep weight. And that's kind of a big change. So I think if any of you guys remember from, you know, a few years ago, the current senior class is the only course, class that's gone through the three levels. So we used to have an accelerated course and then an honors course and then a college level course. This is similar to that, it's not the exact same thing. Basically, the courses that end in zero are like the highest honors, and then the courses that end in one are still given honors weight. And that was a, you know, a big discussion that we had had. You know, if a course, why do we have two courses in honors? Why would they be weighted the same? And they're all good questions, and we had kind of gone back and forth. Currently, we have three, you know, weights for kids. It's AP, it's honors, it's college prep. So to give a kid AP weight, you know, starting freshman year, could really set them up for their, you know, high class rank and stuff like that, just because of math, which we didn't think was equitable amongst the other subjects. And when we used to have the accelerated honors track, they were both honors weight. So it's more just to kind of go to that. It's, again, the two levels of honors is just to make sure that everybody's placed correctly. And that's really it. And then, you know, we'll kind of be very transparent with the kids in the course selection process, you know, which group is for which. Internally, we'll figure out those cutoffs. Essentially, we probably see it right now where we have 40% of our kids in honors and 60% in college prep. We think it would probably be, you know, the honors course would be cut in half, so you'd have about 20% in that highest, you know, any course that ends in zero would probably be about 20% of the kids. And then the kids that are really demonstrating, you know, mastery and strong, you know, maybe a 95 or above, we'll figure out that mark. In college prep, would probably bump into that same group with the bottom 20%, or the bottom half of the honors kids now and form that middle level. And we think that could mean all the difference in the world for these college prep kids that might just feel like they're overwhelmed. I think if you removed, you know, maybe 10% of their peers that are really doing well, we think it would give them a better experience in college prep and, you know, hopefully help their confidence a little bit, just in terms of, you know, being correctly placed and, you know, maybe their, their hands don't go up quite as quickly as some of the other kids that are gonna move into that middle level, which we give honors weight. I feel like I'm missing some things. Another thing, the semester electives are all college level, or college level weight before they were un-leveled. So that's more of a discussion that came from the guidance part of things in terms of colleges recognizing courses as fulfilling the four-year math requirement versus not fulfilling the fourth-year math requirement if it's un-leveled. Student survey kind of came out that a lot of the students may not take some courses like personal finance and business if it is college level. Some kid, you know, some of these kids might be in AP calculus and don't want the college level. So as a kind of fix to that, we're gonna offer a couple of the courses as student choice, either they could take it un-leveled or they could take it college level. The exact same course, put in the same course as the kids that are taking it college level, but at least to kind of remedy that situation, even though it's mostly, you know, smoke and mirrors in terms of what it really does for colleges. We certainly don't want kids to not take it for any reason, because we feel like they're beneficial courses for the kids to set them up for college and beyond, so. Those were kind of, that was my Spark Notes version of the slides anyways, but whatever questions you have, I'm sure I missed something, so.
Well, I don't know if you missed anything. I've got a question, though.
Yeah.
It sounds to me that you guys have done a lot of work to start to rehabilitate and, you know, revise the curriculum. I think that's great. Having said that, I understand about a tenth of what we just talked about.
Yeah.
That's not, that's not against you.
It might be.
No, I don't think it is. I mean, I just think that you're really sort of steeped in this stuff and I'm not.
Yeah.
It would, I guess my question is, is what vehicle besides this PowerPoint are we gonna be prepared to use to be able to address the concern around the big-ticket challenges that the community perceives right now? So like, someone comes to me, someone comes to any of us and says like, what are you guys doing about class sizes? Is it really, you know, how are you doing the curriculum to address class size? What are you doing with the curriculum to do the, like, I, I don't wanna point them to this because I'm, I'm having a lot of trouble following the information here, so.
Yeah, the short answer to that.
I don't think they need a PowerPoint for that, but good.
Yeah, I think that to look at the middle school class size, one remedy that we had that had no budgetary implications was to eliminate the geometry, semester geometry course, so that that teacher can be able to be spread out, to have some of the groupings be smaller. So that's one remedy. We don't know how we got.
Reallocating that after you.
Reallocating that.
Right.
And we're just trying to provide more equity for the students that would have been in Algebra One A, to be able to access that pre-calculus class and to be able to enter that path, to be able to have four years of math more equitably. So I think it's, it's a small part of this was to alleviate the class size, but I think more importantly, we wanted to meet the needs of the students so that they were mastering their geometry concepts. And it's more typical to see that integrated in the math coursework throughout middle school than to just have it be one semester of seventh grade focused on geometry. So that was really the big reason for it.
Yeah, the class size mitigation was a really nice byproduct of a year-long curriculum analysis.
I just, I just think it would, it would be helpful to me, I don't know if it would be helpful to any of you guys, if there were just some sort of a format, like an executive summary of what the, what the challenges are, how, you know, just a couple of sentences or an easy read, a couple of sentences on what you've done, just kind of like what you just said.
Right.
What we've done on this area, what we're doing in this area, and what we're doing in this area.
Definitely.
Because I, I mean, it would, I think it would just benefit me anyway. I don't know if you guys would agree. I just think we should all be sort of, be able to understand it so we can all sort of speak the same language.
We've been talking about it for four months, so yeah, we can all, it's very clear. What's the matter? We can certainly provide just the bullet points so that someone at a glance can kind of, maybe if they haven't had students go through the high, middle school, high school, would understand it. And I think it's important for the parents that currently have middle school and high school students and had older children that already went through the school to be able to understand the changes and the rationale behind it.
Yeah, that's all. I just think it just needs to be understandable.
Definitely. And I think when we start having course selection nights and some events coming up in the next month or so, I think that the intention is for Brandon to be there to be able to answer any questions about changes to the math scope and sequence and some of the implications that were, for class size that were, like Dr. Antonucci said, a byproduct of taking away that geometry, geometry course, but we're also looking at other scheduling solutions to try to look at class size as well beyond. This isn't our only solution that we're looking at.
Right, right.
To try to make sure the class sizes are appropriate.
It's unfortunate, but parents are never gonna get the, the big picture in one, in one executive summary, right? You sat here through an MCAS presentation, you sat here through a budget presentation, you sat here through a class size presentation, now you're sitting through a sequencing presentation, right? Those are all interrelated. So we can certainly provide some summary, but the big picture is, is just, it's very complicated, right? And so I, I don't wanna try to do too much.
Yeah, but you just wanna go to people and say, well, it's very complicated.
I know, but I don't wanna do it.
I know it's very complicated, but like, it just, I just think that, I just think it, this deserves a little bit more clarity on how, on what sort of the schedule is.
This was our big, this was our big rollout tonight of the first time this conversation has really happened publicly. We've had conversations with special ed director to make sure that we're meeting the needs of everyone. We've met repeatedly with Mr. Donovan, Mrs. McGuire, to make sure that we're not missing something in terms of the bigger picture. And so the staff is aware of the changes now. The math department certainly has started their work on how this impacts them with the scope and sequence. And I think now it's time for us to educate the community about these, the changes that we just presented tonight, and we definitely, we wanted to start here.
Yeah.
And continue that work with the district curriculum committee, as well as we can broadcast this, and the website is as appropriate, we can find ways to break it down for the community and for parents that may have questions after tonight.
Cool. Yeah, just, oh, sorry, just one more thing. I do plan on, you know, come course selection time, going to each individual math course. I mean, so I'm just talking with the students and not necessarily the community, but, well, they're part of the community, yes, but at least going over the whole change and what it's gonna mean for them and what the cutoffs are during course selection time, just so that they can make an educated decision. So, you know, I think each teacher is more than happy to give me five minutes of their class time just to go through that stuff.
Great.
Yeah, I had a couple of questions. You used the term override.
Yeah.
Presumably, is that a parent who insists upon putting their student in a class that the teachers don't believe the student's best suited to be in? Is that what that term means?
Yeah.
And when you were mentioning like 48 and 15, and is this, is this more common in math or does it happen in other departments? And then I actually have a third part, but first, override, I understand, and that's important because parents have great intentions, but obviously it has huge impact on the whole department if we have the wrong students in the wrong classes.
Right.
But is it more common in math that parents have an opinion about where their students should be? Because I took this as a way to provide not so much if you don't go on this track, your options are cut off. So now you've created flexibility on every path that a student's in, and then I think it would be beneficial, not, and this was, to me, I took it as not class size related, because we have a lot of parents advocating to put their kids in the wrong classes. And as a result, because they feel like they're gonna miss the opportunity to take calculus presumably or something.
Exactly.
Down the road. You've created a way for every student to have that opportunity if they develop, as you said, they mature later. But I think it's also to say, it's important to recognize students that are being placed in classes at the discretion of their parents has consequences, and that's what you're trying to manage. But to me, I guess my first question is, I get the override now, but is it more common in math than other departments? And is, that's what we're trying to rectify here, not so much class size.
No, it is now. It didn't used to be. So when I looked at the data for overrides, I had a separate spreadsheet, which was, believe it or not, much more complicated, but I did link override data on there, so I had backtracked it for like the last seven years. The average before we moved to the two-level approach was about nine or 10 per year, and then this past year was 38, only three of which were seniors. So the seniors are the current group of kids that have gone three levels throughout. So only three out of the 38 were for those kids. The other 31, 35 are from, you know, those groups that have transitioned to two levels, so.
And do you find this in other departments?
Not as, not as frequently. And I think we talk a lot about student stress and finding a balance, and I think having students placed in a course that's appropriately paced for them so that they're not in a course that they're chasing the whole time. And math is so, math is one of those subjects, you all know, that if you fall behind in math, you can't just catch up as easily. It's, it's skills that build upon each other all the way through, and so we think with the students in the more appropriately paced classes, we'll see a lot better student success, a lot less stress.
So to me, again, thinking at a high level, that's the messaging which would be so important to the parents. If your student is being placed in a particular track, call it, that doesn't limit their flexibility with this new system. In the past, you might have felt you lost the opportunity when they were later in high school. This preserves that capability, but it really, it really allows our faculty to put the students where they think they're gonna have the most success. So I think to me, that's the messaging of this presentation. That's the takeaway I have is this should hopefully reduce, I mean, the way I'd measure the success is you have less parents in the future advocating against the, you know, recommendations of the teachers. That's how I would say this works, if we look back in a couple of years and see much fewer number of parents insisting that their students are placed somewhere else.
And I think talking to the teachers too, to make sure that they're feeling that the courses are appropriately placed and they don't have a range of students so that they can never kind of move along and get to the entire scope and sequence of the school year because the pacing's off right now in the honors classes.
Yeah, because I, I teased that out of this, but that wasn't obvious, you know, like in terms of the, the presentation, but I think that's such an important message to, to parents, to say this is an, an effort to ensure that students have the opportunity to progress to the best of their abilities based on how they develop. So don't worry if, if they're not in the top top, it's whatever grade level they're in. You know what I mean? Like that's, the parents get stressed about that, too.
Yeah, we have, there's a couple of kids right now that started in, seniors now that started in college, a little geometry, and then, you know, the, the old cutoff was like a 93%. If they get over 93%, then they can move. And we have a kid right now who's in AP statistics, so he's worked his way to an AP course. And if a kid starts in Algebra One B now, they, they don't have that opportunity.
Right.
Danielle, can you go back to the middle school proposed?
Yep, the, the current or the proposed?
The proposed. So just to, to Matt's point, when you look at that, you know, seventh grade now, we're taking away one course that was mandatory half, half year, and there's an elective, and kids can take other things if they're not taking that, but that doesn't show how you alleviate overcrowding because you still have the two levels.
Right, yeah. So basically.
Well, I think that you guys are, I think I'm probably not expressing myself well.
Well, no, I think it's a hard.
No, I know, but I, I think the assumption is, is that I'm all worried about class sizes and I need an explanation as to why this is addressing class sizes. That's not what I'm intending to say. What I'm intending to say is that I think that there needs to be a communication vehicle that says, okay, why do we need to address the math curriculum? What are the main reasons? These are the main reasons we're addressing the math curriculum. One, two, three, four, five.
Yeah.
Okay? What are we doing on each of those points, just at a high level, to address the math curriculum? So that we're not like just trying to go back, backwards and forwards to rectangles and ovals to try to understand it. Because I just thought, I can't understand it, that's all. So I'm, I'm not trying to dig in on the class sizes thing. I just think that math is a hot issue right now, and it should be, right, for the community. And if I, you know, if, if my son were going into the sixth grade, and if we're that, you know, it was more important to me than it is right now, because he's in the third grade personally, I'd want someone to be able to just give a repeatable, sort of simple, concise explanation at a high level on what you're doing. So that then I'd be able to say, well, not a math teacher, I'll never be a math teacher, but I get what they just said, and I'm, I'm on board with it. That's all I'm saying.
But back to my, I'll be low level. With the, the 621 and 622, you're still gonna have parents override, putting the kids into, or the 272, 71, right? So how are we alleviating that?
So, yeah, the override issues, I guess, were more specific to the high school because that's where the change from two levels to three levels is moving.
Oh, because I thought we had a lot of overrides in middle school.
Yeah, I don't have the numbers.
Coming up those class sizes. We do.
We do.
That's why those eighth grade accelerated.
A little more imbalance because of that, yeah.
Honors classes, yeah. That's where some of the overcrowding is.
Yeah. Actually, Donna and I had spoke about that today, just the process through which fifth grade teachers recommend kids in the sixth grade, because I think it's about 60/40, which is, you know, that's very high. 60% of kids are in honors and 40% you know, are in the moderate section, which is high. So we had looked into, you know, how we could do that, but, you know, if you made it more stringent, you might have more overrides too. So, you know, that's something we can continue to look at. And then in terms of the class sizes, I, I get, I actually am seeing this and more through your perspective, actually. It almost looks like, you know, because the other side only had one course, geometry, and now we have two electives, you know, are we making class sizes even bigger? And I think what we had forecasted would basically be out of the full, you know, 1.0 teacher that teaches geometry, I mean, currently teaches 10 sections, five in the first semester, five in the second semester, he would probably teach three general, like maybe two eighth grade, one seventh grade course, which would just deduct the numbers for seventh and eighth grade. And then, so the other, you know, the other 40% of his job would be broken up between And then, so the other, you know, the other forty percent of his job would be broken up between those two electives. So those two electives are a lot less kids than the one elective from the prior slide.
So this is just the beginning of a longer math conversation, but certainly we'll take your feedback and make some quick and easy question and answer sheets so that we can have that available. But we'll continue to educate parents and students about the changes, so they're really clear about it when it comes to course selection.
Yeah, and I think I agree with what Matt said, is just to, to articulate what you're trying to accomplish, and then here's how you're doing it.
Right.
You know, because no one will really get, understand that.
No, because I think you guys are doing a lot of really good work. And that's great, because there is concern. So we should be able to shout the good work that you guys are doing from the rooftops in an understandable way.
The exciting part too, is that typically decisions like this would have come from, at the end of the year, from a district, the district curriculum committee as a recommendation. But because of the MCAS scores and because of the fact that we're kind of blocking students out of accessing that calculus, we were able to work with the principals to see if we could make some changes now.
Yeah.
Because this is when we're planning to be able to implement that next year. And I credit Brandon too, for being able to assist with some of that geometry issue that we've been having this year, that we're still in the same boat with the geometry. And so he's been working really hard with the math teachers to make sure that we're weaving those geometry concepts in across the math courses, not just in that one semester geometry class, so.
Yeah, that's great.
Yeah, that's good. I think parents are going to be concerned to know that by the end of high school, their, their kids are equipped for the next stage of whatever it is they want to do from a math perspective. So, so if you can help them kind of mentally walk back from senior year, what the expectation is for, to prepare them for college level, whatever they want to do, walk back through the, the high school years to show that all kids have the opportunity to get to the point senior year that, that they are fully prepared to, to go to a four-year college and engage in either a science or math-based major. That would be useful. So, thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you. And next we have an overview of the Panorama Social Emotional Survey by Jim Donovan and Sarah Maguire. In this, I got to have a little peek preview at one of our meetings, and it's just fascinating to me that you can collect this data.
Jim, grab a mic, yeah.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Yeah, get those mics close to you guys, thanks.
It's nice to see you all. So Mrs. Maguire and I are here to talk about the Panorama Survey for students in grade six through twelve. So we, in early December, administered a social emotional learning inventory to students in grade six through twelve. And this came out of, of, out of a, of an issue we were seeing in both buildings, which is social emotional learning is a huge focus point for both schools. And one of the things that we've really struggled with, and our teachers have struggled with, is how to like get the information we need about our students, so that we can operationalize and make the learning personalized to each kid in each class. And we struggled to figure out how to do that. So a, a number of us in the district participated in a survey, a webinar, excuse me, last year from Panorama, which is a company that's based in Boston and has developed a number of different survey instruments to schools, that schools use all over the country. They've had millions of students take their, their surveys, so they're, they're really well-vetted, really well put together, very responsive company to work with. And so we decided to, to take on their, and, and use their SEL tool for students six to twelve, to really focus on the things on these, on this screen, that are so, so important, such important pieces to the educational puzzle, that we believe our teachers can support if they have the right information. So if you could, we'd move to the next slide. So we have, the tool has, I believe, fifteen different areas that we could collect data on. And we paired those fifteen down to seven, that we felt were the, the most important to us at this point in time. So it broke up sort of the two buckets. The first was student skills and competencies. So the area of self-management, self-management was getting tasks done. How do you manage your time? How do you work with other people? Do you procrastinate or not? How do you, exactly right, yeah. Our kids do as well. Emotional regulation, so how well, if, if you get upset, can you calm yourself down? Do other people's moods impact your mood as it relates to the classroom? Social awareness, how aware are you with the interpersonal skills between people? And growth mindset, the idea of whether or not intelligence is fixed, whether or not talent is the determiner of whether or not you can do it. How much does, you, how much does your opinion of whether you like a subject impact your learning? So we focused on those four, and then sense of belonging to the community of our schools, teacher-student relationships and school climate. And so if you would go to the next slide. So in, in early December, we, December fifth through twelfth for the middle school, and the twelfth through nineteenth, we administered the Panorama Survey, which I believe is in your, was, was sent out. It was the same survey for both buildings. And we had our highest percentage of student completion rate ever. We, we modified the way in which we, we administered the survey in math classes over a four or five-day period, whenever teachers, it fit naturally into their instruction. And that approach is, has given us just much better data and the response rate that we are thrilled with. Especially compared with most, some of our more recent surveys, where we run the mid to high seventies at best.
Great. So one of the really fantastic things about this tool, Panorama, is that the way the data comes back from the students is really easy to digest. So there's a couple of different elements that they, the group curates out of the data. One has to do with some trends, where they take looks at our school-wide, and in our circumstance, we can actually see six through twelve trends. And we can compare ourselves with the, the national data. So because they've used this, the survey, these question groups in so many schools, it's norm statistically significant, so we can kind of look at ourselves versus, for, for my case, other middle schools with similar demographics, and see that measurement, which is really interesting. We can also see trends for specific question types, and kind of dig a little bit deeper and draw some takeaways from that. The really powerful thing for our teachers that I want to highlight is that there is a structure that we've embedded into the data, where teachers see their student competency levels and their ratings with that, based on the classes where they see those students. So they can actually get to data for their period one, whatever, class, and make some meaningful curriculum decisions to support where they identify some areas of need. So in this example on the slide, you can see on the right, there's some reporting data. And these are hypothetical students, these aren't our actual students, just to protect that data. But, and then on the left is that heat map, where you can see students would have more green if they are more competent in that skill. And the gray or the square, the more support they might need, or some sort of targeted curriculum integration there. So we can look at that in terms of trends, and we can look at it in terms of specific groups of kids, which is really meaningful.
And if I can add one thing, over time, to the image on the right, we'll also be able to, as we administer it multiple times, you'll be able to track students' data year over year and administration to administration.
Show that growth there too, yeah. Okay. So the, the next obvious question is, okay, so we've now measured students and their competencies. Where do we go to kind of target some supports for them? Panorama has built into its system a playbook, which is targeted supports that were developed by teachers across the country and vetted by teachers across the country. So they actually tie this playbook to the different areas that we've measured. So teachers and groups of teachers and administrators, all different kinds of groups could look at some of that data and then go directly to some recommended resources, lesson plans, ideas. Because I think, you know, one of the, the last time we talked about this SEL focus for us, it was really about integrating it into the curriculum. So it's not a standalone thing, it really needs to be embedded. And so this playbook is really a wonderful starting point for our teachers to go for those resources to support the kids. And it's just got a whole variety of resources there tied to the SEL competency. So it'll direct them to growth mindset things if their population needs that. But they also have access to items we didn't necessarily measure in this survey. So it's not like they're limited to just what we looked at, which is great. Thank you. A couple of other really interesting pieces about this data. They, they are able to give us some information on a variety of subgroups. So we're, we're able to dig into the trends in terms of gender, for instance, or grade level, or special ed status. And we can kind of, ideally, that, that should inform some of the supports we explore and try to implement at the school level, at grade level, and classroom level. So those are just two interesting examples of the, the type of data we can get out of that. And then lastly, this ties really nicely with our Newzella professional development, which Danielle already, Dr. Klingman, sorry, already mentioned. From January eighteenth, our six through twelve teachers were trained on the platform Newzella. A component that we were able to obtain through that is specific to their SEL resources. So they also have curated lessons, resources, strategies, specific to those competencies. And so what we're really asking teachers to do when they look at that data is start with these resources and have a place to go where they can really support the kids in their classes right away.
And so the, the approach that we're taking is, first of all, there's an enormous amount of hands on deck. So from our first conference call with Panorama on Dr. Klingman and Dr. Antunji have been on, all of the subject supervisors, curriculum supervisors have been in on it as well. And so we, we got our data in early January and have been working out how we're going to operationalize it. So our plan right now is to work in, in sort of like three different buckets. So the, the faculty meeting bucket, which Mrs. Maguire was able to start today, but the, the high school will be in the near future. The departments have been, some used their professional development time last week. Some will use their faculty, their department meetings later this month, and continue to use PD time over the rest of the spring. And within our own principals advisory groups, we are debriefing the data. So really, we want our teachers to be focusing on the classroom data, the social, social awareness, growth mindset, the other two indicators, to really focus on how could we, how could we develop and foster those competencies in our classroom, using Newzella, using the playbook to try to identify areas that we can target and target them. Which is also a part of the new evaluation rubrics that I'll teach you, and the updates to the state language. So it really kind of supports those changes as well. And Mrs. Maguire and I are also working through our principals advisory groups and getting some student focus group data. So what did you really mean when you, when students answered like this? And we did it, Dr. Antunji, Dr. Klingman, and I did a group last week of high school students, and we had another group today. And it is really, really an important part for, for me. But because what the students were answering and the way I read the question was often very different. And so being able to kind of bridge that gap has been very helpful in the early stages, to try to understand the school data, the, the school connectedness, understand themes across both of those, those competencies groups, and where we can start to target interventions. So as someone mentioned earlier, you know, we have our breathe-out stress lesson week that's coming in early March at, at high school. We want to focus on one or two major areas as a school and have that week support that. In addition to the work that teachers are going to do for the individual students on a class-by-class basis at this point. And, and we hope long-term to be able to look at how we can incorporate all this information into our instructional design, the same way we do technology standards, and the same way we do, you know, all the different layers of the state frameworks. But right now, we want, we really want to, teachers to kind of open the doors and go for everything they can go for, and try to provide them resources that they can grab and start to work with. Because if our teachers have the right information, they are extremely creative people, and they can do amazing things with a couple of resources. And so we really wanted to start this push as a district at the middle school and the high school, by having some information that our teachers could use and some resources to go, to go after it with. And so we've been really, really pleased with, we're, we're getting what we hoped we would get from the platform as a starting spot.
I would just add that doing the Panorama Survey took some, it made the information that we knew was there measurable, because social emotional learning skills are something that you can't say. We have a hunch that the kids need some help with growth mindset. It really allowed us to get to the students directly, to see where they would rate themselves. And a lot of times, when you look at the individual student results, the teachers are like, yes, I'm glad that they recognize that they have some difficulty with emotional regulation, we see that. So it just allowed us to kind of take the social emotional learning to the next level, where we want the teachers to be integrating some of the activities and methodologies from the playbook and from the social emotional learning collection in Newzella, to be able to weave that into their content areas while they're teaching, so that these aren't two separate things that we're worrying about, social emotional learning and the rigorous content that we have. We want it to be woven together. So this really kind of bridged that gap for us.
Kadum, oh, I'm so, I'm just about ready to jump out of my chair. No, I'm so super excited. Can you go back to the, the areas of focus, like the.
Certainly, yeah.
Both the individual as well as the community? So what's, why I'm just freaking out is because this, what you just said is so true. Like the, it's such a squishy, soft, hard-to-wrapped your arms around concept. And you were using terminology like operationalize. I think this is an example of how people that were educated a relatively short time ago have no idea what's happening in schools. Because when you look at those skills, like self-management, growth mindset, emotional regulation, social awareness, are as important as a ninety-three on AP Calculus or whatever for success in the world. And, and I think to be able to provide, and I guess my, I have a lot of questions, but really just want to say yes and do more. And is this something that we've communicated to our students and we can start to articulate to our parents? Because you can imagine on an inbound, like teachers have to go through this really difficult process, and the ones that are gifted can do it quickly, but they, they have to get to know their students, a hundred and twenty of them, every single year. The benefit of getting this inbound and saying, here is a person who really has off-the-charts negative self-esteem, or overly inflated self-esteem, whatever. Having some of those key indicators of social emotional competencies at the beginning, right? As opposed to having to wait to get to know those a hundred and twenty students individually, I think could be so impactful. But I think this will be so foreign to virtually every parent, because the parents don't really know where their kids stand up either. But will our students embrace this? Will they do it every year? Will they recognize the importance of this? And will the parents support it? Because I think the benefit of, if you can do this every year and you can really see the impact on individuals and in classes and in the community, it makes sense then of how revolutionary this is. Because those things for success are as important as what classes they took and their test scores and stuff. And I think most people will get it instinctively, but to me, this becomes programmatic. This is integrated to the way in which we're developing our students to be successful in the future. So, so like.
Yeah, I, I would just, just to grow on your point there. I think what we're learning is that these student skills and competencies are actually foundational for the success you're talking about in those other classes. And that there's a direct correlation between the ability to manage yourself and your emotions, and your ability to be successful in your academic classes. And so that's really important then, that we're spending the time and focus to support our kids and their competency in each of these areas.
That's, it, it might be good at some point, if we could get that down to even fifth grade. So you're catching it before they go into middle school. Because a lot of this is probably recognized, and then you have that enormous shift in responsibility put on the students, going from the one classroom, where the teachers sort of know all the quirks, or, you know, definable.
Panorama does do some work with, I think the youngest they go down to is third grade? Is it?
Yeah, third, three to five, yeah.
And then they, earlier than that, it's, it's a little hard to fit the questions so that the kids kind of give you the information that you're, you're looking for. But they have some kind of modified question types that they've been working nationally to implement in younger grades.
So to, if I can piggyback on that as well, so to the, the first part of, of your question there. So we are working with Panorama to understand, like, what, what are the, what's the first steps you take in the right order, you take them, so that we, we have a real positive start here, and that's something that we can build on. And so we are, you know, the high school really trying to have that march point be our jumping point of having a, a kind of a more, a deeper dive into the student responses, because some of them are counterintuitive. I had like a fascinating conversation today about the growth mindset competency. Because there, there were questions about talent, questions about what do you like, questions about intelligence, and how do you view those? And our students see, see them almost as the same thing. And that, that causes problems, you know, and how they believe, they believe about themselves and their ability to learn in, in different content areas and just learn in general. And so it's through asking those questions that we get it. And we're not quite there yet in asking all those questions to the students. And the same for teachers, because we, we're coming with our own experiences and our own biases and our own kind of like understandings, and we have to figure out. and our own biases and our own kind of like understandings, and we have to figure out, get through all that so that we can take the first couple of steps together.
So, I, I, I find it interesting. I, I had almost the opposite reaction, Peter, to this. One of it was exactly what you said about the difference in understanding between you and the students, about what the questions were asking. So, it, which makes me wonder whether the data you're gathering is actually relevant, right? The students are understanding something different than the teachers are understanding about these aspects of social emotional development, then teachers may be treating problems that are not the problems they think they are, right?
Like they're misdiagnosing, because-
Yeah, 'cause-
Yeah.
Students are, are identifying their characteristics, social emotional characteristics, in a different way than the, than the teachers understand those characteristics to be. So that was one problem I had with it. But I also, I felt like it was really important that if you were gonna do this, the surveys needed to be annual, because it might be quite easy for a student to pigeonhole themselves into a particular persona. And particularly in middle school and high school, students can change on a dime, or try on different characters and personalities, right? So, if a student in freshman year identifies themselves as having difficulty with procrastination, by sophomore year, they may not. And yet their teacher, with that, in the absence of a, an updated survey, the teacher may be relying on old information. So I thought that was an issue. And then there's, there's a, a school of thought in psychology, which is that we actually don't really know ourselves at all. That we're the worst judges of ourselves. And that our more reliable information about our character comes from the people around us. So I kind of, you know, and that's just a perspective within, Tim Wilson wrote a book called Strangers to Ourselves, which argues this point, that actually, we don't understand ourselves at all. And that, that there's a lot more work to just really getting to the bottom of who, who we think we are and how we react to particular situations, or understanding how we react to situations. So I thought that there were some kind of very thought-provoking issues. I didn't jump up and down. And I'm not panning it either, 'cause I think that schools have to do something. And this is definitely something good.
Yeah.
But I, I just feel like there are a few caveats.
I did, um, so to one of your, the points you just raised, so our intention is to administer this again in the spring.
Great.
A second time, and then presumably to continue to administer it. So-
Perfect.
The license allows you to administer it as many times as you want-
Oh, right, okay.
-in, in a year. So-
Yeah.
There's not, um, we, we did it in December because we could start-
Sure.
We started in November, so that kind of, that was just our timeline that we could really work on. And there are other, there are other domains that we, competencies we didn't introduce here at all.
Sure, 'cause there's only seven, right?
But it is, there are definitely limits to, not limits, but there are, it's a developmental thing. So there's, there's, there's different awarenesses of, of what things mean at different times. And-
Right.
The, the opportunity for us as a, as a district, I think, is to take a, a first step, and I'll speak for the high school, to take a first step here. Because we, we are responsible for some of, we're, we're responsible-
Yeah.
For these, we're responsible to look at them and to incorporate them, to incorporate into our planning and our instruction and our classroom design. And there are not, are the previous tools that we have used to do this, like our CSCI-
Right.
Just didn't give us the information in a format that we could use quick enough to turn it around.
Yeah, it was all anonymous.
It was all, yeah. And so our students, and we couldn't get it to, to kids, and it couldn't get to teachers, it just was too clunky. This tool offers us that ability to really quickly, when our teachers got their logins, that day they logged in and every class and every student was there.
Sure.
And it, my experience in, in looking at the classroom data with teachers is that they look at it and they go, oh, that makes total sense. And that makes total-
That's what I was gonna say, did you find it?
And so, we haven't, I haven't had many conversations like that, but they have, each of the conversations has gone exactly like that.
Right, okay.
So, did, did, do the teachers that you speak with and work with on this, did they find that most of the information they go was validating to them? Like things that they suspected?
Yeah, so I, I think a, a lot of it fits into a broader context. So they're, they're certainly not reviewing this data without all their other experiences that they have with students.
Right, yeah.
So, it's either validating or draws some questions, which are really interesting to start to discuss and look at, and kind of think about in class groups, or team-based, or grade level, or school-wide, which I think are really meaningful to taking these first steps towards addressing.
Right.
Yeah. 'Cause some of the data also is about students' perception of how they, how they perceive they're treated, you know?
Yes.
How much teachers care for them, like, so, I don't know if validating is the right word, some of it's concerning. I mean, I think some of it's, we have to have some difficult conversations-
Yeah.
-internally about how we're-
Yeah.
-working with students, you know, and, and what kind of experience-
Right, because what they're saying is how they, how they feel they're treated and bothered.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And, and just, I'll tie that to what Julia said. I, I hear you, Julia. I, I'd also say, you know, it's the saying, like, perfection's the enemy of progress, right? Like, we have to do something, you know?
Of course.
This particular instrument is highly regarded-
Sure.
...nationally, and it is, it's, it's enough data to make it statistically significant. So, you know, I feel good about it, but it's never, it's never perfect, right?
No, and I think the approach that I hear you talking about is that the data is one, this data is one point of reference amongst a number of points of reference, and that, that it's food for thought and food for further questioning, rather than kind of fixed information about any particular individual. So, if that's the attitude, then I don't have, fundamentally, I don't have a problem with it. But those were the, these were the questions that came to mind, that, that kids could get into a rut, or be perceived to be in a particular pigeonhole, and that that was not a great-
Yeah, I, 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 what I'm make, super excited about, and Dr. Klingman, you said it in convocation, and it made a huge impact on me personally, but your challenge to the faculty, and you started with the data supports, the largest impact we can have on our students is by making a connection with them. And not connecting with the kid who's easy to connect with. So I'm not talking about the process, this is brand new. Nobody knows how to do this. This isn't magically going to provide a bullet, but the recognition by the school, and I think by extension, John, the communication to the community, that this is an imperative for our school to be successful, is to focus on those things on the left. If our students don't have good self-management skills, they don't have a growth mindset, and if we can take a student who intrinsically doesn't come to us with those skills, if we can accelerate him or her a little bit, the impact on them could be so profound. So I think that's what I'm excited about. Not the, like, software or the survey data or whatever, but the fact, this starts to put it into, what do you do about social emotional learning? So to me, the actionable developing programs, educating our faculty to leverage, because they can't get to know 120 students effectively fast enough where you can make the difference. So, that's really what I'm reacting to, is not so much like the survey's perfect or the data's right, but it's just, this is all, to me, it's revolutionary, you know, because we're recognizing if we can impart with our students, and in fact, it's a requirement for them to be successful, if we can help impart these skills and we can support all the other places which they get these skills, family, community, et cetera, schools are gonna be successful. So, that was my, my excitement, and it ties back to what you said, which is, you know, it's hard to do. How do you connect with a kid who's the hardest to connect with, not the one who's easy to connect with. So I think this starts to take us in the direction of figuring out how to do that. And having faculty that are not so good at this, at being a little bit better, you know, and so overall, the impact can be huge. So, so that was my, you know, enthusiasm. Like, how you do it, you're gonna have to figure out. But the fact you're doing it is super exciting.
Is there, have you guys found that there's so much data in some cases that there's sort of a risk of like analysis paralysis? Or, at least with the playbook, like, it says like there's hundreds of classroom strategies and all the articles from Newzella. Are you making an effort to try to sort of institutionalize some of the strategies so that their strategies that are used for like a specific, you know, social emotional challenge is consistent? Or do the teachers just kind of go through Newzella and pick the things that they think really works and kind of go for it?
So I think there's kind of two points here, right? So we have some information that's gonna guide us in a longer-term look at this, and that's gonna involve more of the survey, more of this data, to inform some kind of systemic decisions that we'll make to support our kids. But I think our goal for the teachers in the immediate future is to have that kind of actionable starting point, and then the resources to, to kick that off. My experience today in kind of launching this with the faculty as a group was because of the, the way that the data is presented, those reports, my joke is I love a good heat map, but it really is like accessible information. Sometimes you get this kind of, these data reports, and it's just a lot of, like, it's overwhelming.
That's what I was sort of getting at.
The, the mode of this really is slick. And so, my observation of the middle school teachers was that they were really engaged with digging in and looking at some of the trends of the students that they have, and already kind of jumping to that, oh, maybe if I highlighted this next week when we do this lesson. You know, it, it was a, kind of a natural progression.
Yeah, cool.
And do you feel like the, the faculty feel they have some of the tools in their toolbox for addressing these already, or is this food for professional development going forward?
So I thi, I think it's just both, for sure. So what we're trying to do is to have, you know, in our leadership meetings with the search supervisors, our message to, to them has been like, we need a handful in each one of these four domains, right?
Right.
These are your, like, your go-to lessons. So when a teacher comes to you and says, I don't wanna, I don't quite know where to start here-
Yeah.
-you, you've got your two or three that you're-
Sure.
-start with these. And then we kind of, we, we build.
Right.
And so we're trying to build those strategies in each department and kind of build that culture-
Yeah.
-within each department, and, and, and those are our first steps. So, yeah, when you go to playbook, I mean, it's, it's weeks of your life before you can come out of there. So, and the same in the data, because you can go in and you can start looking at subgroups and try to compare grades, and, I mean, it just goes on forever. Our teachers don't have that much information. They have the four classes, there are no real subgroups, 'cause they don't have enough kids in a class to have a subgroup. So-
Yeah.
-they have their, they have those four kids and they can, or those four columns, and they can see, they can see that information. They can get to the heat map, they can kind of rearrange the kids a little bit-
Yeah.
-and then they can go right into playbook. And then go right to Newzella, and the, and the language matches, you know? And so they know, they know where to go. And we did three hours of, Newzella came out into three hours of PD-
Yeah.
-a month ago.
January two.
January, yeah. So, and that's still fresh. So we, it all kind of came out the same, over the same two-week period.
That's really good.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I think it's great.
Thank you, thank you for having us.
Do we wanna keep Jim up for them?
Jim, just don't, don't run, just in case there's any questions. We just have a couple trips, but I think it's self-explanatory, but-
Our three action items. The first one is a vote to approve an overnight trip to Hyannis for the student council conference in March.
Yeah, this is an annual trip, so.
Yes.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Hey.
Vote to approve the overseas trip to Cuba, which will be in February of 2020. And that's a service trip and a farm learning-
Yeah, it's sort of part, part community service-
Sort of both, yeah.
-and part, you know, tourism. And this is Sue Sullivan, who's been before you quite a bit, and she is super, I know, she's super excited about this, this opportunity for, for the kids. And it's kind of amazing that they're, have the chance to go to Cuba.
And it was relatively low cost.
Yeah, yeah, not, not, not to, not to, I mean, all relative, but-
Right.
-under $3,000, so.
Yep.
Okay. Motion to approve?
A motion to approve, or I move to approve the overseas trip to Cuba in February 2020.
Second.
Any discussion?
I just, I had my son Declan today, three-month trip with Rustic Pathways, and it was a phenomenal experience for him. So, I think it's a really great organization. And the kids will be challenged, for sure. It will be a full vacation.
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 And vote to approve the overseas trip to Europe in April of 2020. And that's another Sue Sullivan thing.
So Mrs. Sullivan, yeah?
Yeah.
Busy.
Can I get a motion to approve?
Move to approve the overseas trip to Europe in April 2020?
Second.
Any discussion? We all wanna go? All those in favor?
Aye.
That's the little shepherd.
All right. Correspondence, other comments and issues for consideration at future meetings? Anybody?
I just wanted to say, I, I attended, and I wanted to thank especially the music department faculty. I attended Beauty and the Beast with Megan, and my son Rory played in the Pid Orchestra. And it's just so incredible and how, you know, how much outside the classroom, and not to single them out, but they do a ton with all the concerts and the prep and, you know, rehearsals and the number of hours put in. And it's remarkable, and the, the level of talent, and I'm sure they see the progression from, you know, fifth grade all the way up through high school. It's really just a great strength in the district. So, really fun to go see, but also very grateful to the faculty for the work they do.
Excellent.
Pass that on.
Public comment?
No.
All right, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Goodnight, Shannon.
Bye-bye, bye Shannon.
Where is Shannon?
Bye-bye.